Good evening. Thank you for coming to the Candidates Forum for City of Hercules City Council. My name is Myrna Lopez and I will be the moderator for this evening. So, welcome to the League of Women Voters Candidate Forum for candidates and issues running for the Hercules City Council. We are co-sponsoring this event with several Hercules community members. Thank you very much for hosting with us tonight. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization, which means we do not support candidates or political parties. We can however take positions on issues when they can be based on League studies. It is the League policy to ask that no one display campaign buttons, signs, literature within this room. The table that is outside does contain materials for the audience to take home and to keep outside. The format for this event is that each candidate here has an opening statement that then will be followed by questions from the community that have been already said by the community and the League of Women Voters. At the close of the forum, discussion may continue informally and outside of the room. And if you have questions, you can continue to approach any of the candidates. We will rotate questions of candidates so that everyone has a chance to answer first. So, for example, we will start with our first candidate, Dion Bailey, and then the second question is Chris Kelly will start, and so on and so forth. Is that clear? Okay. So, we will begin with opening statements from each of our five candidates tonight, and they may speak for two minutes. We have a timer, Ms. Regina Matoya.
Raise your hand. There she is.
And what you will see is a yellow placard, which means you have 30 seconds left, and then the red placard, which means your time is up. And please keep to these times so that we can keep moving and have courtesy for one another. So, with that, I'd like to start with opening statements, and Mr. Dion Bailey, we can start with you.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting this forum together, and thank you for everyone that's out in the audience that took time out of their schedule to come out tonight to listen to our very opinions about the future of our city. My name is Dion Bailey, and I'm running for city council. I'm running because I believe Hercules has the potential to be one of the best cities here in the state of California, as well as one of the safest cities in California. I have a vision for our city, and it's based on four principles, which are public safety, financial sustainability, regional transit, and smart development, or simply having our developers build to what the zoning requirements are. I believe that those of us here, all of us in Hercules, have the right to feel safe in our home and in our community. I believe we have a right to a city that has the finances to provide the services that we need. I also believe that we have, that we deserve a city that can provide regional transit, where we can get to and from work every day without using I-80 corridor, where we might have some environmental protections there too by using masterings versus using all this in our individual cars. I am committed to these principles. I believe we can achieve these things by working together. I'm committed to you, citizens of Hercules. I will listen to you, and I will vote independently on the council. I am the Chair of the Planning Commission currently. I've served there for five years. A little bit about me and the background there, I kind of, I work for the city, the Port of Oakland, the City of Oakland. I am a duty manager there. I have a bachelor's degree in business, as well as a master's degree in business, and I believe I have the experience necessary to bring about change here in the city of Hercules.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Chris Kelly.
Hello, everyone. My name is Chris Kelly, and I'm currently serving on the city council this year as your mayor. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for holding this forum. It's wonderful that you came to help us out. I was first elected in 2014 after volunteering at the city and also attending nearly every single city council meeting for four years prior to 2014. Now, even when I got on the council with as much as I knew, it took me about a year to get up to speed, and I realized that this job is basically about deciding policy about matters that affect our everyday lives: public works, street repair, trees, contracts, transportation matters, budgets, land use issues, and also some parks and rec matters. Now, I take great joy, enthusiasm, and pride in doing this kind of job. Those who know me know that I'm an independent thinker, and I evaluate each issue on its very own merits. I stand for the following: number one, promoting public safety and working with our community police force; two, maintaining fiscal stability in light of our past issues and our challenges for retirement costs in the future; improving transit and transportation; I serve on the Board of the Westcat Bus Service, and I'm also on WICTAC; and attracting economic development to our remaining development sites for the kind of development that we hope we want. In short, I am seeking to build on my knowledge and experience on this council, and I really want to help Hercules blossom into the dynamic city on the bay that it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jack Deep Singh.
Yes, hi. Good evening, everyone, citizens of Hercules. My name is Jack Deep Singh. I go by Jack, J-A-C-K-E. And my first statement on Facebook was, "I'm not, I'm not a political candidate. I'm a member of the community." So, the past 20-plus years of Hercules have served my family and myself really well. It's been great here, and I would like to see a lot more innovation come through. I'm currently a innovations director at my company in San Francisco, and I see what's happening with the whole artificial intelligence automation wave that's coming in, and this morning's debacle with whatever happened with the Supreme Court appointee, without taking any names. I feel obligated to do what I'm about to do right now, which is saying, if Jamila Smith-Folds will do the honor of accepting my endorsement, I will be dropping out because it's a more important time than ever for more women to be in government. And so, thinking about the League of Women Voters as well, once again, thank you for this platform, but I just don't feel right running right now, and I hope the next time come around, I can finish the race, but for this time, I will be bowing out. I apologize, but I hope you understand. And I'm respectfully going away. It's nothing to do with any of the campaigns. I hope we can stay working hand to hand. I have, I would like to bring a lot of jobs to Hercules as my goal, and thank you.
Ms. Jamila Smith-Folds.
First of all, thank you. Like, I will totally take your endorsement. That's fantastic. Thank you for having us here today. We really appreciate it. My name is Jamila Smith-Folds. I believe in the strength of community. Our city is full of diversity, and I build on that, and our common bond is the strength of our families. So, I love that about Hercules, and that's what I want to continue to strengthen in Hercules. I'm a former public school teacher, so I understand the strength of communication, transparency, and goal setting. I will continue to talk to the citizens of Hercules about what their needs and their wants are, because that's what the city council is here for. I'm visible. I'm always in the community. I'm at our public schools every single day volunteering and talking to the moms and the dads and the grandmothers and the grandfathers and the aunts and uncles that drop their kids off every day. I want Hercules to continue to be a safe community, continue to be a loving community, and continue to be a community that everyone wants to come to. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Alex Walker Griffin.
Thank you. Like she mentioned, my name is Alex Walker Griffin. I am now 21-years-old as of Tuesday, and I work urgently as a councilor. So, a little bit about myself, I do care deeply about the city that I've lived in since I was six-years-old, and I want to give back. I currently am a public servant. I sit on the California Community College's Board of Governors. I was fortunate enough to be appointed at the age of 19 by Governor Brown. And in fact, the California Community College is the largest system of higher education in the country, and I'm proud to be the voice of 2.1 million students. In addition to that, I serve in the California National Guard. I took an oath to protect and defend Californians and members, and many women of the United States. If elected, I want to build bridges with our community and the people that are involved with them. For example, it makes no sense that if a person wants to get from here to Vallejo via bus, they have to take a bus to El Cerrito and then backtrack, pass through Hercules to get to Vallejo. In addition to that, I want to be an advocate for our students, because I went to Hercules Middle School, Hercules High School, and I graduated from Maloney Elementary School. We need to work at all five schools to make sure that these kids have an opportunity to succeed, because I've seen the numbers, and the kids are in a bad position right now, but we need to make sure that their futures are bright. In addition to that, Hercules truly embodies what it means to be an American. Three out of five of our council members are immigrants. This is a city that shows, you can make it if you really try, and we have a lot of mom-and-pop businesses that need a little help and a little helping hand to make sure that they have the opportunities to succeed and grow. And then also, I want to work on our public safety. I was a police explorer for a while, and I know that we have a lot of good police officers here, but we need to make sure that the people of Hercules know and feel as though that they are safe. And last but not least, work for our firefighters to make sure that nothing bad happens in Hercules, and we don't look back 20 years from now after a major disaster and say, "What could we have done better?" Thank you.
Thank you. We'll start with questions. I think I, can everyone hear me? Yes, okay. So, with the first question, we'll start with Ms. Chris Kelly, and then we'll keep rotating. Would you like to excuse yourself, or would you still like to answer the questions? I'm not sure.
I'll excuse myself.
Okay.
That'll give more time to candidates.
Okay. Thank you. (APPLAUSE)
Do you want your little card? Do you want your little tab?
I do.
That's brave. I just got to say, wow.
Okay, we'll start with the first question. What are the three important issues facing the city of Hercules now and you see in the next four years?
I think the primary issue is fiscal stability. You know, we almost went bankrupt a few years ago. We had a recall council. A new council came in and stabilized the finances, and the current council has continued with that. So, we have a very, very lean budget. You know, we only have revenue and expenses of about $15 million a year. That's half of what El Cerrito has. So, we have to watch our expenses, and especially right now, because Calpur's retirement costs for our employees are going up. They're doubling in a five-year period. So, we have a great city manager who's working on that, and we are saving for our retirement. We've got a fiscal neutrality fund. That's our savings account. So, fiscal matters are really, really important. The second really big issue is the Regional Intermodal Transit Center, or the RITC or IITC down by the waterfront. That's been a vision for Hercules for a long, long time, and it's finally beginning to come to fruition. The private developer, Leadcor, is moving ahead with two phases of the development. They're going to do the housing, and then eventually, when enough residents are here, they'll work on Bayfront Boulevard, commercial and retail. And the city has an initiative to get the train to stop. We've been working with the Capitol Corridor. There are 15 people on that board, and we're getting closer to actually getting the train to stop, and we've got designs in place for that. And I think the third issue here is overall quality of life in the city of Hercules. And you know, that includes basic public safety, trails, places for people to recreate and have a good time and enjoy their lives, feel safe and happy and relaxed.
Thank you. And just as a reminder, we'll continue the two-minute format throughout these questions. Next.
I think the three major issues that we have in Hercules now is our schools. One is our schools. With all the housing that's going up, our schools are busting at the seams. So, right now, all of our elementary schools are packed to capacity, and then that's going to translate into our middle schools that are going to be overflowing, and our high schools that can go flowing. One of the positive things about Hercules are the small classrooms that we can offer our families and our students. The small classrooms help with a better education, that better education translates into their success. So, I would like to work with our schools and our city to understand that if you build more houses, more houses, more families, more families, more babies, more babies, they go to school. And if we want the money to stay into the school, then it's not going out to the charter schools, it's not going to the private schools, it's going to our public schools. So, we have to be forethinking with all the housing that you're building, because it turns into families. Families are great if you're able to educate the kids that are there, that come from the families. The second thing, I think, is safety. We need to continue to make our city a safe city, and that means having more of the community out there, more helping each other, neighbor seeing neighbor, neighbor watching neighbor, neighbor talking to the police officers and informing them what's going on. We need to be more Miss Kravitz from Bewitched. We all need to be looking out the window, making sure that everybody's safe, and we know what's going on, and we need to talk to each other. We need to be a city of hello. We need to see each other and know who's in our city and who are citizens in Hercules. The last thing is local businesses. I want to spend my money in Hercules. I don't want to spend the money in Pinola. I don't want to get on the highway four and spend my money in Concord or Walnut Creek or Vallejo. I want to spend my money in Hercules. So, we need to have attractive businesses that bring in the retail and the revenue and keep the revenue of Hercules.
For me, I believe it's the budget, the overall budget of the city. We're just a few moments away from any sort of catastrophe in this nation happening that could put our city in a very bad situation, and I don't want to see programs or anything really get cut that could affect the quality of life here in Hercules. In addition to that, public safety. So, public safety is one thing, but actually feeling safe and knowing that you're safe is a totally, are totally two different things. So, as I mentioned, I'm in the National Guard, and driving through Hercules, one thing that really scares me is if we have an earthquake, we have three main roads that people are going to have to funnel out into. And why I'm terrified of that is because when people panic, people freeze, and I don't want anyone to get hurt or more lives being lost over something that we could possibly prevent. In addition to that, I do think economic growth is a problem here in this city. We have no way of marketing ourselves. The other day, I was at Congressman Thompson's event, and I spoke to someone. They said, "Yeah, I live in Vallejo, but I've never been to Hercules." And they said, "I never had a reason." I said, "Well, probably didn't. If your car didn't break down, you needed to go to Home Depot." I think we need to change that, because we have a monopoly over our location. We're the first city that you land in when you come off the bridge, because Bologna, Crockett, Carquinas, they're not cities, they're all unincorporated, and when you come off Highway four from Concord and Walnut Creek, Hercules is the first city. So, we need to make sure that people know what's exactly in this city, so we can keep these dollars coming in. Everything I'm wearing, I didn't get in Hercules, but I know that we have the opportunity and the ability and the capability to make sure that we do have the success. And we need to work with outside partners to make sure that companies, businesses, and mom-and-pop shops have an opportunity to succeed.
Thank you. I believe that the three major issues in the city, important issues in this city are the ones that I discuss as part of my principle, which are public safety, financial responsibility, financial sustainability, and, oh, I'm sorry, financial sustainability, and the last one being regional transit. Financial sustainability is critical for us. Many of you know, we have a small taxpay city, so we get about 3.6% of that tax bill we pay every year to the county. 3.6%. That's about $300 to $500 per household that the city gets back in those county taxes that we pay. Pinola's closer to 7%, Richmond's at 21%. Those numbers probably aren't going to change anytime soon, because to redo that requires a regenerating of all of the taxes within the county. So, we have to do that through sales tax. So, our next issue is how do we generate more revenue? It's sales tax. We need to get the development going at Sycamore Crossings, as well as at Bayfront, to get more retail commercial use, so we can get tenants in there to provide tax revenue, so we can pay for our city services. Police are expensive. We need them. We have two extra police officers this year. We'll have 26. We're going to lose two probably due to retirement, but for a period, we'll have 26. We aim for one per 1,000 residents, so that's about 24 sworn officers for the 24,000 or so of us that live in Hercules, and we've got to maintain that. We have a lot of residential pieces coming online, more people, more police officers. That's a major issue for us. The intermodal transit center is important. It gets us off of I-80. It provides a way for Herculesans to get around without getting on I-80, and also provides a regional mode of transit, which will bring folks to Hercules to use our, and hopefully spend their money when they get here. And then development, we need to make sure that as we do development, that we continue to work with developers to build what we're zoned for, not what they want to build. Homes don't do much for us. Maybe we'll talk more about that challenge as we go through this tonight, but we need to get more development to be what we've approved it to be. The citizens voted on much of this stuff 20 years ago, or expressed their opinion to Charette 20 years ago, and we need to make sure that we get what we need. We have some gas pumps coming. That's going to generate revenue for us. Thank you.
Okay. Next question, more specific, and we'll start with Ms. Jamila Smith-Folds. Most residents have expressed disapproval of CVS as an anchor store at Sycamore Crossings. As a council member, how will you encourage developers to reach out to the community to ask what they would want?
I understand the complaints that there's a CVS right across from Alucky's by Safeway next to the Rite Aid. Get it. As a mom and a planner, I don't know why they did it. I understand that the citizens aren't happy about it. The one way to get developers to listen is to have the citizens come out and tell them. Just the way this unit is packed right now, that needs to be packed every time there's a council meeting, every time there's a commission meeting, every time there's a planning meeting, every time that there's someone who says they want to do something in our city. We need to be the voice of our city, not developers. And if a developer says they want to put X, Y, and Z, and we want A, B, and C, then we say, "Thank you. Don't let the door hit you where the good Lord split you," and we wait for the next one to come in, and then we'll do it again, and we'll go through the same process, because we're patient. We're Herculesans. We've been waiting for the Safeway for 40 years. Patient. So, we'll wait, and we'll wait and get what we want and what we need, because that's what we deserve. So, the way I'll get developers to listen to us is by not dropping our standard. We're Hercules citizens. We know what we want, and we'll be patient, and we'll fight for it.
Pretty much like what Jamila said, getting that community involvement is what we really need, and it's not just necessarily just coming to City Hall and participating, but coming out to the schools and talking to parents, and even talking to kids. I used to work with five-year-olds, and I'm assuming a lot of people in there have kids. Five-year-olds tend to be the most brutally honest people that you could ever talk to. In addition to that, we need to have community engagement. If they want to come to our city, why don't they come to us and talk to us? Knock on our door and say, "Hey, I'm so-and-so from this company. I want to build this. What's your opinion on this?" So that way, Hercules residents are informed. I don't know if you guys ever really paid attention, but just about anything in Hercules, competition is high. We got two Starbucks on the opposite side of the hill from each other. We got about three different places where you can get Bova, all within the hop and skip. So, pretty much, when we have another pharmaceutical company coming in, that's making, that's making it a lot more harder for places like Rite Aid and those jobs, and because they're going to have that advantage when you come off the freeway, you're going to see them, that could potentially mean losing jobs for some people. And if there's no language about having an MOU, so where people can transfer for their jobs, if that place goes under the tank, we're in a bad spot. But pretty much, we need to work with our community members of all ages, so that way we get a full perspective of what people are thinking, and not just the few people that come out to the council meetings or really pay attention, but to the average person that doesn't sit in this room right now and doesn't have an idea who their mayor is and doesn't have an idea who their council members are, so that way we can have a full-blown perspective, because that doesn't happen a lot, especially in cities of less than 30,000 people.
Thank you. Just to confirm, the question is about residents being unhappy about CVS Pharmacy.
I can repeat the question.
Would you please?
Most residents have expressed disapproval of CVS as an anchor store at Sycamore Crossings. As a council member, how will you encourage developers to reach out to the community to ask what they would want?
I would do just that, would encourage and reach out to the community. There's a, generally a process, and I have to be careful. CVS and that development will be for the planning commission, so I can't speak specifically to that particular development, but I can talk about development in general from my experience as Chair of the Commission. Developers usually go out to the community. They get feedback. As a commissioner, I usually stand in the back of the room and listen to hear the feedback as well, so that when that developer comes before the commission, I can express what I heard or make sure that they understood what the residents said at that particular listening session. There's a, one of our developers right now has done three, I think, listening sessions for development. The CVS specifically, developers are allowed to choose the tenants they like. We get, as the planning commission, to zone what it is. It's commercial. They get to pick their tenant, just as a homeowner gets to pick who they rent their home onto. We can encourage different uses, but what I have heard from many developers is, they like grocery stores, because we aren't portraing launches online yet, and they like pharmacies, because we're all aging. So, those are guaranteed sources of revenue. Those sources at the CVS, if it is in fact a CVS, because that's not set yet, will support the rest of the retail that's going to be behind that. So, while some of us come pick up our prescriptions there at the store, we may go over and shop with one of the vendors. They're proposing a pad space, which would be something probably like a fast-food type restaurant, and they're proposing fast casual. That's what they're proposing. But I can't speak about how we stop them, because they will be before my commission very soon, and I don't want to give the impression that I've prejudged their project.
To address this issue in the real world, developers do come and have asked the residents of Hercules what you want, and then they may or, they may or may not follow through with it, because there are real development issues. A developer comes and needs to have an anchor store in order to attract other retail development around it. So, that could be in a department store, or a grocery store, or in this case, a pharmacy, or in the case of CVS, a pharmacy that may be partnering with Aetna to have a health clinic or something like that. This particular developer got a commitment from CVS to come here, and then that will allow the foot traffic to develop, so that other stores, like restaurants, chain restaurants or independent restaurants, other uses like that can develop. It's always hard for people to understand that the council, the city council, has no control over what actual stores come in here. You know, we can prevent certain kinds of stores in certain areas, you know, but, and we can suggest things, but it's up to the developer to decide and get that commitment from the store. So, while we can make our, you know, our desires known, and hopefully, as we get more development, we'll get the kinds of things that everybody wants, we cannot demand that a developer bring in exactly what we want.
Moving on to the next question. Ms., oh, Mr. Alex, we'll start with you. I'm very concerned about the level of density being developed with two multifamily properties along Bayfront and existing Aventine. The area of Sycamore and San Pablo is already heavily used, because it's the only access to Highway 80 and Highway four. What can the city do to mitigate the level of congestion, considering the increased population in addition to Safeway and Sycamore Crossings? What parties would you work with to overcome these challenges?
So, the parties that I would like to work with are public transportation agencies, the bus agencies that come in and out of city on Hercules on a regular basis. I think that that would alleviate some of the burdens of being able to come in and out of Hercules efficiently, because considering the traffic that it's going to bring. In addition to that, I think we need to have more carpool access and more access for people to take lifts and Ubers, because I've seen people carpool together, and I've talked to people in the morning who have done such a thing. But like I said, we need to work with our public transportation agencies, so that way they can come more efficiently and more on time, because I don't know if you've ever tried to wait for a bus here in Hercules. If you missed it, it's gone, and that's unfair for many residents, especially a little bit more of the older crowd that may not have the opportunity or the accessibility to get out. And like I said, I think it's just going to alleviate a lot of the burdens of having to wait 15 minutes just to move a mile, which has happened to me before in the past. So, like I said, partnering with agencies like Westcat and AC Transit.
Thank you. Mr. Dion.
Thank you. Regarding the density at Bayfront, that was done by initiative. We have very little control over what can happen there. Some of the documents are available online for the Bayfront Initiative, but it was zoned as a high-density area. It was done to support the Intermodal Transit Center. You may have seen some similar type developments maybe in Dublin or where Bark has expanded in the recent years. They usually do a high-density development around that. As a councilperson, we are part of regional boards, and WICTAC, and there's others out there, where we work with the region to bring transit out. Currently, for the west side of Hercules, you have to get to San Pablo to catch the bus. That's just how it is. Part of the problem is, we can't get a bus to make a turn on railroad at Sycamore. I think that it was originally thought that we would get some shuttle-type buses for the neighborhood, and they can make those turns, but it sounds like Westcat's going towards larger buses. So, we've got to work on a way to get a bus down John Muir to make that left turn, and then to get a turnaround to get back out the same way, until we can work with the Intermodal Transit Center, which will have a larger space for buses. So, transit's in process, but it's not going to be here right away. Densities will be higher. Traffic will be higher as well. Traffic in that general area is going to be higher. Safeway is going to bring about 6,000 new cars at peak time to intersection of Sycamore and San Pablo. What we will also get, though, to help us with that are two new stoplights. As part of the planned development, we will have a stoplight at Tsushima, so one can make, if you're coming down from Pinole, a left turn into the Bayfront area, or you can also, you will be able to make a turn at Chase Bank. So Chase Bank will be a stoplight intersection. You can make a left turn. The theory is, for someone like me who lives at the bayside of town, I can bypass that intersection altogether by turning ahead of that intersection. Or if I'm coming off Highway four, taking John Muir to the Bayfront. So I may never need to access that intersection of Sycamore and San Pablo unless I'm specifically going to Safeway, coming here to City Hall or something on this side of town. So we're trying to mitigate the traffic.
You know, I think back to what one of our former planning commissioners, Richard Mitchell, said many years ago. He said, "The beauty about Hercules is you can decide what kind of housing development you want. If you want to be in traditional suburban housing, you can be up here in the hills. If you want the transit-oriented development that we're developing down in the Bayfront, you can choose that." Now, that transit-oriented development by nature is denser, okay? And the people who are moving there are accepting that transit-oriented development and that dense area. And along with that will come, hopefully, the train and certainly the bus. In fact, I was talking recently to the general manager of Wescat, and very soon they're thinking about sending the JX bus down there, down John Muir Parkway, turning around there. We have, we're going to be looking into making that happen with one of the developers, and then going back out, John Muir Parkway, and eventually the ferry. So that kind of thing, the density, allows us to get that development right down there by that homes, and it'll also allow eventually retail and commercial experiential use to be built down on Bayfront Boulevard. Because without that, the developer says, "We won't have enough customers going down there." So, you know, it's a good and bad kind of situation. And if you want that extra development, you've got to accept a little bit of density in a certain part of town.
High density is a synonym for hot mess, just to me. Like, high density, more people, getting in their cars, trying to get out, trying to get to where they need to get to at eight o'clock in the morning, trying to get their kids to school that starts at eight-twenty, having to go down there. Stoplights are great. The stoplights turn red, so then now you're stopped, and you have to wait for it to turn green again. I understand the concept of development. I understand the concept of having more retail. But all of the things that are in the future don't alleviate the problem that exists now because Safeway is going to be here before the train and the ferry and the bus and the ship and the boat and however else, everything else that wants to come. Safeway is going to bring in that traffic. It's going to make it a headache for us to be able to get, no matter what part of town you live on, you have to eat. And there's a Lucky across from the Safeway, so this is where you're going to buy your food, which means you're going to hit that traffic. Any way you come, you're going to hit that traffic unless you do what we don't want you to do, which is to get on Highway four and go shop out. That's it. That's the reality of it all. So we have to think in what we are dealing with in the reality, which is right now, which is traffic is going to get worse before it hopefully gets better. So what do you do to alleviate it? You know those nice little green bikes that they have in some cities where you can? Yes. Where you can ride those bikes and you park at a location, you do this? We have a lot of our citizens that walk. We have a lot of our citizens that do ride bikes. We have, encourage that. Do a little bit to encourage that. We have mommies that know that you don't get out of your house until ten o'clock when everybody else is gone. So we have to just be honest with our citizens and let them know that it's going to get bad, but to hang in there and be patient, and let's not make it worse.
Thank you. Moving on to the next question, and we'll start with Mr. Dion Bailey. As we know, combating crime requires the effective cooperation between the police and the local residents. As a candidate, do you believe is the responsibility, what do you believe is the responsibility of the local residents to combat crime in their neighborhoods?
I think combating crime is a challenge for cities all over the Bay Area. I had a conversation with our acting police chief before Chief Emboden came on duty. Some of the crime we've seen in the news here in Hercules lately is the same crime other cities are having. It just happened on a slow news day. That's how it caught the attention. I think the general principle is if you see something, say something. And we have a lot of citizens that are out there doing that. I see that app where we get all these Ring Doorbell, "Who's the strange guy outside the house?" We should continue to do that, and then we should continue to keep things out of visibility. So in your cars, keep those things tucked away. What I did learn from the senior leadership at the police department is that a lot of our crime is committed by folks outside the city. So we don't really have an issue where Herculesians are taking from Herculesians. It's crimes are opportunity where folks are coming in during our, when we're all at work, during the middle of the day, and taking advantage of that. Key component of that is keeping our non-sworn police force going. So we have, I think we have at least one new person just dedicated to doing enforcement, code enforcement. So they're out and about seeing what's going on. It's a non-sworn officer, a little bit less on our budget. And then we need to keep our police numbers up, our sworn officer numbers up as well.
Yeah, I have to agree completely with Dion. If you see something happening, say something. You know, our police force is really great about responding. There have been several times when I've called, and they come right away, and they're very, very helpful. And our new chief, Bill Emboden, is really a proponent of community policing. He's going to be getting out and walking and meeting people and talking and getting your information. Also, it is true that there are gangs that come through here, all on Highway eighty, whether it's in Hercules or Pinole or other cities. They get off, they commit crimes, and they go. In fact, it was a couple of years ago when I talked to our former police chief, and he said, "You know, when Starbucks is getting broken into and cars are getting broken into there, the gangs start there, then they go over to the Willow seventy-six, and then they go out to Franklin Canyon, and they're changing cars all the time." So if you see something, say something. Don't keep valuables out, you know, in your car. And if you go away for periods of time, keep a radio on in your house. You know, have, get to know your neighbors. Have your neighbors report if something goes on. A lot of people these days are getting security cameras, and that also can deter a lot of crime. But basically, talking with all of us and talking with our police force is really key, and I would encourage that.
I think it's the same thing that we talked about before, about our neighborhoods need to have a business grabbets. They need to know what's happening in the neighborhood. You need to know if you don't answer your Ring Doorbell because you're in a location that doesn't have a Ring Doorbell, or you don't have a Ring Doorbell. You have a neighbor. So instead of relying so much on technology, I want us to rely on each other. Know your neighbor, know the face, know who you see at the library every Saturday. Know, okay, I see that person walking every day by, on Redwood. I see that person at the park every day. Get to know each other. That's the way we keep ourselves safe, and that's the way that someone can smell it when they come in. Know that person said hi to every single person here. They know that I don't belong here. They know that this is not my home. This is not my city. And that's okay. And know your police officers. Get to know the two police officers that work at the school, Officer Sanchez and Officer Russell. They know your kids, so you should know them. And they should know who you are so they can tell you if Billy's doing something he's not supposed to be doing. Billy is a fake name. But if Billy's doing something he's not supposed to be doing at McDonald's, make it a community again. Make it where we're one-on-one with each other, and that we have enough kindness with each other, enough love for each other, that we're watching each other's back if, or if we don't have a Ring Doorbell. That's my answer.
Well, I agree with everyone on here. I think that sometimes it can be a little much to ask people to speak up, especially if they've had something happen to them that's pretty traumatic, or if they come from a place where if you speak up, you're snitching, and that could potentially cause you some harm. It can be really difficult for some people to want to come out and actually speak out. But also, like Jamila mentioned, actually getting to know our police officers, having forums so people can know where to go when they need to talk about something. In addition to that, providing resources of things that people can do to help build up their protection of their homes. So I don't know if a lot of people have ever seen them, but iRing is like a really popular thing to have now. It's, you ring the doorbell, and someone can actually see you when you're standing on your porch. You know, I'm not saying the city of Hercules has to pay for that. Let people know, hey, this is something smart that you can do. And then also letting them know other crime-preventing tips. I actually had my car broken into, not in Hercules, but over in Oakland, and I didn't have anything visible. So I think also, too, we need to make sure how well-lit is our city? How thick is voyage in certain areas where someone can hide out and potentially jump and try to grab your purse, try to potentially rape you, a lot of other things? We just need to take a whole scope of looking at the city, looking at our problems, and seeing what can we do a little bit better? Whether it's being more surveilled, telling people, "Hey, you know, we're going to have more police officers over here if you want to have them over here," and letting people know where they can go to help out themselves.
Thank you. I think the next question will begin with Ms. Jamila Smith Folds. And...
I think it's Chris Kelly.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're keeping track up here.
You're right. I have written down his name. Thank you. Next question is, is the city currently on the right path? Given the competing priorities in the city, how should the city of Hercules pay for its, spend its budget?
I think the city is on the right path now. We have a wonderful city manager who likes to, who really watches our budget carefully and likes to distinguish between ongoing money for ongoing services like police, parks, and rec, things like that, and then one-time money for special projects. And we don't confuse the one-time money we get in with the ongoing money. That's how we definitely control our budget. You know, several years ago, when I first moved to Hercules, this city was going down the tubes, and it was really in a bad way. But I think the current city council has really brought it up. Now, I got to tell you that our city staff, you know, we had to lay off forty percent of our staff years ago. So every single person who works here and up at the rec center and down at the corporation yard works really, really hard. It's like being in a startup organization, and they get a heck of a lot done. I think right now, not only are we addressing the big issues, the development issues, but we're doing small things, like we're putting a new roof on the community center, like we're repairing our streets and our sidewalks. There's a whole lot of things going on that you don't see that might be kind of boring, like improving our recording system or getting the county to take over the business license registration. All of that can help, and it makes our workers much more efficient. So even though there's things that you don't see, I really think the city is moving ahead well now, as best it possibly can, and I think it's going to get even better.
I think the answer is kind of in the question. Is the city on the right path? The citizens would tell us. So if the city's on the right path, then the complaints to the city council are down. People are out enjoying the city in and of itself. People are on venues like Nextdoor or Facebook. You see that there's positivity on those sites and not questions about what's going on with the budget, where's the money, what's happening there. So is the city on the right path? The citizens of Hercules say, "Mehhh," from all the information that we have out there. What can we do to put the city on the right path? Listen to the citizens. Listen to the citizens of Hercules and what they want and what they desire and what they need. Macro and micro. If you walk down, if you walk down towards the park, the path, it's broken and it's stumbling and it's all over that, that's fixable. That's something that the city can fix. That's something that can get us on the right path. There's things in that purview that can be fixed that helps the city and gives the citizens a sense of ease, and the city's moving forward. If you know you're doing something, you can see it. So does the city represent what it's doing? Can the citizens see what the council's doing and where the money goes and where your taxes go and where all the revenue goes? If you can see it, then the answer is the city's moving on the right path. If you have zero idea because there's still not a sign above your street where you live, like on Shepherd, then you have, "Mehhh." You go, "Maybe not." So my hope is for the city to stay on the right path, for the citizens to see it. So if that question's asked, the citizens say, "Yeah, because I had this happen, this happen, this happen, this happen, this happen, and this happen."
I think overall, it kind of depends on the angle that you want to look at it. I think if you're looking in terms of inside City Hall and what's been improving because of the city council, then yes. The quality of life has been slightly improving here in Hercules, but we can do better. For just about, at least from what I've seen, every time Hercules gets a new business, Pinole already got it, or they got something better like two years ago. In addition to that, I think the quality of life in terms of our young people could be a lot better, too. So I've met a lot of parents who've said, "Yeah, I pulled my kids out of Hercules Middle School. I pulled my kids out of Aloney, Hannah Ranch in Lupine." I don't know why I pulled them out of Hannah Ranch. But, and they, they're considering moving in. Some people have left because they said there's nothing for our kids to do. It's too expensive for these programs to only be going on two days, maybe one day a week. And then also, our schools aren't doing too well with the exclusion of Hannah Ranch. But I think it just really depends on the angle that you want to look at. I think as a whole, we need to make sure that every level of the life here in Hercules for every different resident is improved, and not just what you see here at City Hall, because most people aren't going to be necessarily concerned about how the city budget's doing, but they're going to be concerned about, hey, did that street light get fixed? Hey, did that pothole get fixed? The things that they can see on a day-to-day basis. So like I said, it just depends on the angle. But overall, moving in a positive direction. I just think we need to continue it and just work with different constituency groups to make sure that it stays in that positive track.
Is the city moving in the right direction? I think so. I think that, as the mayor mentioned earlier, the budget is fifteen million dollars. My department, our work budget is twice that. So it's, we're working what we have. Wouldn't it be nice if we paved some more roads? It would be. We paid the roads. It's expensive. We don't have that kind of revenue. So I think what the city tries to do, we don't have it right now. The city manager is very effective with seeking out grants to pay for things, but grants take time. You have to collect those in bits and pieces. Once we get enough money together, we can go out and do that thing that we're trying to do. I think that staff here at City Hall does the best they can. There's a fifty percent thereabout reduction in staff in two thousand and eleven. Staff took pay cuts. Staff still is not making what they need in two thousand and eleven, even with their last increase in salaries. So we're doing the best we can. But again, the other component of that is how do we spend more money? We have to generate more, and we do that through basically retail. It's sales tax. We're not going to get it for the property taxes, as expensive as our property taxes are here in Hercules. I heard mention, you know, street lights, et cetera. There are lighting and landscape districts throughout the city. Some of them are challenged financially. The city has gone out twice to try and get the residents in those neighborhoods to vote to raise their LA lighting and landscape district fees about ten dollars, but it's hard to do. It's added. Most residents think that I'm paying eight thousand dollars a year in property taxes. Why do you need ten more dollars for lights? Right? Most don't understand this three hundred dollar thing that we're talking about here today. So there are challenges for us. We're trying to do the best we can. Some neighborhoods have had some new street signs put up, much larger, much more reflective. That's the city's way of just trying to show that when we do get some revenue, some excess revenue, we are spending it. We're also, right now, the city is building a shot court over at, not Frog Pad, but, yeah, Frog Pad Park, no, Crossing Frog Pad Park. And that's a hundred and seventy thousand dollars being used to invest in our youth. I've heard talk about schools. Unfortunately, the school board is separate. West Country-Crossing School Board is separate from the city, so we don't really get to control what goes on at the school district. Of course, we lobby on behalf of our residents to do the best we can. What we do do is provide services through the Recreation Department.
Thank you. Next question, I think we start with Ms. Jamila Smith Folds. How can the city of Hercules attract new for-profit businesses and incentivize them to increase economic development, quality of life, choices in entertainment, and work for the city of Hercules?
I think that the council and the commissions have to go out and search for it. It's, if Pinole can get it, and we have similar demographics, we have similar economics, then it's about seeking and finding. I think that the council and the commissions have to be more patient, and they have to go and look for what the citizens are saying they want. Don't just jump on the first thing that comes through, or the second, or the third. Be patient. Be patient and be thoughtful, be thoughtful and forethinking, and knowing what's going to be needed down the road. Not only what we have, but what we're going to need. So I think it needs to be exploration. Go out and look and see what Pinole has. Go talk to their council. Go see how they got what they have. And just be curious and slow. Be curious and slow so that we know that we get what we need, and so the revenue will stay in the city, and it will bring others to our city so we can have the entertainment and the restaurants and the retail and everything that the citizens are saying that they want.
I think we really need to let businesses know where we are. You know, I've met so many people, talked to so many different people, even that live fifteen minutes away. They've never been to Hercules. They've never had a reason to come to Hercules. If residents in other cities are thinking that, sure as heck, other businesses are going to be thinking the exact same thing, too. First off, we need to give them an incentive that say, "Hey, we're going to revitalize and boost up our marketing strategies that other cities like Richmond does, where they let you know about what's happening in and around the city." We've been doing good with banners, but we need to make sure we have an online presence, too. And that way, we sponsor our ads, we sponsor our events, so that way people know what's going on in the city. Also, too, we need to get an understanding of what's missing. You know, I don't think that, I don't think anyone here can't find a place you can get coffee in the city of Hercules. But we need to find out, hey, I can't get a pair of jeans in Hercules. That's kind of crazy. We need to bring in that business. Hey, I kind of want to buy a pair of shoes in Hercules. Huh, we need to bring them in, too. Being selective, like Jamila said, with what we want to come into the city, and really focusing on what can make Hercules unique. Like I mentioned earlier, we have a good location here in the Bay Area that stands out compared to other cities because, to be quite a thing, to be quite frank with you, if you're not on eighty coming north down at five P.M., Hercules is a pretty accessible city. And we just need to market that and really show ourselves for who we are because right now we're known as a bed and breakfast community, but we need to be a place where you can get bed, where you can go to bed, get your breakfast, have some dinner, and have an opportunity to spend dollars here in Hercules and get a pair of jeans because, to be quite honest with you, I'm tired of going on Highway four to go over. with you, I'm tired of going on Highway four to go over there.
We are working to attract new businesses in Hercules. We have found that there's a little more interest than there has been in the past. So Lead Corps with Block Inn initially had, and Block's Q and R, so Lead Corps is the developer for Bayside, where, excuse me, the Bayfront, where the large triangle hole basically is in the ground right now, that's a parking lot. They initially came in, they wanted to use some of their commercial retail space for amenity space. They've come back and reprogrammed that, they've talked to the city, and they wanna add more retail in. Developers are, from the planning commission side, as I sit here at the deos and we discuss these things with the developers, there are a myriad of things that you can order online, things that we are more, are very easily willing to do online. So clothing, et cetera, they're apprehensive. Coffee, we're all buying coffee, so they'll put a coffee shop in. Safeway's gonna have two coffee shops, Starbucks inside and it's planned for a peach on the outside. So there are certain segments that are guaranteed funds for them, and that's what the developers like. Again, we don't have, as a commissioner, I don't have the authority to tell them which company they can come. I can, we can zone, but I cannot tell them who to use. But we are always looking to attract new businesses. Some council members go out and talk to businesses as well, trying to attract them and bring them to the city and show them what we have. So we're always looking to improve the selection for our residents. As a council member, I will do the same. I want all of us to shop and stay in Hercules to continue to build this tax base and continue to have these city services that we so desperately need.
I think in the city of Hercules, we can attract other businesses by becoming part of larger regional organizations that will help promote Hercules and West County as a whole. Just as an example, I serve on the board of the East Bay Economic Development Alliance, and on October twenty-fourth, I will be speaking at a forum at Crane Way Pavilion in Richmond with the other mayors in West County to talk about the possibilities and opportunities of development here in West County and here in Hercules. And I think we can do that, for one, because we don't have enough money to hire an economic development staff person. Secondly, we can't really incentivize businesses anymore because we don't have anything to offer them like redevelopment. Redevelopment has gone away, so we can't give them monies, we can't give them tax breaks. That's really not realistic. But we can tell them about our wonderful quality of life, our links bus which goes directly from Hercules to San Francisco if you wanna live here and work in San Francisco, also the fact that our homes are lovely and newer and cost a heck of a lot less than they do in San Francisco and in Berkeley, really emphasize this quality of life here in our city. And as far as getting the kinds of businesses that we want, as Dionne said, most developers now are not looking to build huge retail outlets for clothing and shoes and things like that. They wanna bring in experiential retail. So that's what we're focusing on here in Hercules. Bringing in an Oxbow Public Market down by the Bayfront. I've been talking to the developer about that. Bringing in more restaurants, bringing in an ice cream store, and then that will attract people from the outside. And it is planned that we're gonna be getting a hotel, and that will bring outsiders in who will spend money in town.
Thank you. Let's see, that was our last question. And our next question, we start with Mr. Alex Walker Griffin, and that will be, it's following. Some of the landscape and lighting districts are on financial deficit position. After two assessment balloting, the increased assessments failed to get a majority vote. This means the city will have, may have to stop services. What do you think the city should do about these neighborhoods and eventually have to maintain the lighting and landscaping?
I think that's where we work with our outside partners and we work with our other elected officials in and around the area. We work with our assembly member, whoever the next one may be, to make sure that we can get some grants from the state that can potentially help us out with getting what we need. Because if we just solely rely on these votes that may or may not come through, we're gonna put ourselves in a very risky position that could potentially fail. That's why I say we need to work with our state assembly member, whoever that person may be, and our county elected officials, to see if there's any sort of grants that we can do. I know on my board, we recently worked with the legislator in the governor's office, and we got eight point nine million dollars for student veteran resources across California, different community colleges. So it's not impossible to work on, to potentially get these grants. I just think we just have to think a little bit more outside the box and go to Sacramento a little bit more to try to get more money to help us out.
I think that stopping city services is probably, should be our last resort for the LSCs. I know that there are some that are operating at a deficit, and the cities have to figure out what to do. These are sort of like trust accounts, so you can't take money from one neighborhood to pay for the other neighborhood. So the question becomes, how do, these are not the neighborhoods specifically, but how do the trees take, help pay for the birds? You can't merge those two neighborhoods together. So there's gonna have to be an education process. I think that if I were on the council today, I'd have the city manager go out and start that process now. We need another vote, and citizens need to know, everyone in that neighborhood needs to know that if in two years, the vote doesn't happen, these are the consequences. But I think turning off the lights is not the best way to move forward, it's not the safest way forward. So we have to go out and do another campaign to try and do that. I spoke about that a little bit earlier, but it is a challenge for the city. I think there are two districts that are teetering there. I think we got one to increase their payments every year, but it's a major issue for us. I don't advocate turning off lights, at least not at this phase, but we need to go out and start doing that education process for the next ballot, two years from now.
Yeah, the landscape and lighting districts are really a challenge because they were all developed before any of us were probably here, and they are not equitable. So we've gone out twice through the Proposition 218 process to ask different neighborhoods, "Would you be willing to pay a little more to cover your deficit?" And you know, we're actually getting closer, and people are beginning to understand that the monies they pay go into the landscape and lighting in their neighborhoods, and if they pay just a little more, like in my neighborhood, maybe sixty bucks more a year, then we can get new streetlights on our streets. I do not advocate turning off the lights at all. And I'm gonna go before the council and say, "We don't wanna do that. We may not be able to maintain them to the standard that everybody wants, but just turning them off, I think, would be really, really dangerous." Another possibility is, in some of our districts, there are parks and things. Some of those parks could be moved, those funds could be moved into the citywide landscape and lighting, thereby lowering the costs for some of those districts. As far as getting grants goes, you know, I've talked with our city manager about this, and I have not heard of any grants that we could get for ongoing landscape and lighting. You know, you might be able to get it for a few improvements here and there, but that would be a capital construction cost, not for ongoing maintenance. I haven't heard of anything like that. So I think it's up to us to continue to educate our residents and educate our homeowners about our responsibilities and what we realistically can and cannot do in landscape lighting, and I think we can succeed.
If I'm elected to the council, the lights aren't going off. That's something that I would not advocate for, would not want, would not suggest, would not even have in the forefront of my mind, that lights, any lights would go off, any landscaping would get to the point to where it's dangerous for the citizens of Hercules. I'm a mom. We do budgets all the time. Sometimes you gotta bribe a competitor to pay-pal, but you get it done. So it's one of those things that the safety and the welfare of the citizens has to be forefront before, you prioritize. Before something else, you make sure this happens first. And I think as a council member, and the strength that I bring to the council is being the mother who has to balance that budget with five people in the family every day and to learn more about how to do that on a macro level with the city, I think that only adds to it. But advocating or having the lights go off, not something that's on my radar.
Thank you. Next question will be our last question, and then we'll move into closing statements. Okay, I give you, let's finish on a more positive note. Pick one of your priorities and describe specifically your plans on fulfilling your goal.
My favorite, well, my favorite priority, I guess, when the interest be the most, is the Intermodal Transit Center. I think there's a lot of opportunity with the ITC. I think the first phase of that is gonna be the train station. Talked to our consultant, and our cost for that is about fifteen million dollars. Once we get the approval from, to get the train to stop, the grant door should open up a little bit, we can start collecting grant money to get that going. Once that's open, we can then look to the future, which would be a ferry stop out in the bay. There's some drawings floating around on the city website. It sounds to me like what's gonna have to happen for the ferry is, we're gonna have to, we can't just put it across the train tracks, that's gonna require dredging, which is very expensive. B C D C gets involved. What we'll probably do is use the point, so we have to build some kind of an overpass over the train tracks and then use the point where a ferry used to stop many, many decades before I was born, and that's probably where the ferry will stop to get folks off to the city. The ferry, as I understand it, has expressed interest in stopping in Hercules. We've just gotta put that infrastructure in to get that to work, so there's some costs there for us. So I think that's a secondary item. But for me, just transit in general within the city is a passion of mine. I grew up in San Francisco. We moved here when I was in high school. There's a lot of commuting to high school every day, so I'm used to that eighty, and the commute was forty minutes, and then it was forty-five, then it was an hour. And now it's two, I don't commute to the city anymore, except two hours an hour to get back and forth to the city during rush hour, so I'm very passionate about getting that going. I think that is a key component of the Bayfront and its success, especially the retail, which we have a large retail commercial component at the Bayfront, and I think that ITC is very important to that. I like to see buses stopping on the west side of town, and that's my, that's what I'm most interested in for my priorities.
Yeah, I think the biggest issue for me is transportation overall, and that, of course, includes the ITC, getting the train to stop, getting the ferry, and bringing the buses down to Bayfront. And then maybe looking into other buses. I was talking with the general manager in Westcat the other day about getting a bus that would go down Sycamore, cross San Pablo, go down Sycamore, maybe stop at Aventine, and then turn at Tsushima, and then go to, down San Pablo, because the people around Aventine, Bayside really need some kind of transportation. And we should talk to those people there and find out where they wanna go and what they need. I would also advocate, if possible, for eventually maybe some autonomous cars to maybe run from the transit center down to the Bayfront, so we could get people back and forth, because once the train comes, we may need some transportation there. Autonomous vehicles may be on the point if we get the ferry to come. And then, you know, look into other ideas to get people around, encouraging Go-Go Grandparent, which is like Uber for seniors, that kind of thing. I'm also very much interested in traffic problems, looking at transportation studies, which have been done, by the way, where I'm down where Safeway's gonna go, by Sycamore and San Pablo. So, and I'm also interested in traffic calming. And we have a subcommittee, I'm part of that subcommittee now, that is gonna be branching out and starting to do some traffic calming on Hercules Avenue, out here, right by the library, that's a pretty dangerous area, and then maybe looking at something at our major intersections, and eventually branching out to other areas of the city. Lastly, I serve on the board of WIC-TAC, I'm part of the I-80 Subcommittee, and we are looking for ways to get that HOV lane more efficient, so the buses and shuttles and real car pools can go so fast that people like me who are office workers wanna jump out of our cars and take transit to where we're going. These things really excite me for Hercules.
My priority are the schools. It's the babies. It's the elementary school, the middle school, the high school. It's joining with our school board, because we are two separate entities, but we need to bridge that. We need to bridge that gap. We need to have our families and our parents at the Hercules Education Foundation, which is amazing aid to our schools. We need to have people show up at the libraries. We need to use, our kids use the library more efficiently and use it to where it helps educate them and get them to a different level of their education. My priority are the having parents be able to volunteer, having grandparents who stay at home be able to volunteer, making the school, that Little House on the Prairie, Andy Griffith School that we all had, giving that back to our kids. Our kids should not have less than what we had in school. They should not have, they shouldn't fear going to school. They shouldn't go to school on an empty stomach. They shouldn't go to school making sure that they don't have what they need. My passion is the schools. My passion is to make sure that the kids that catch the bus in Hercules, that they don't sit out in the hot sun because there's no shade. There's no shade when you're on, across from the high school and you're waiting twenty minutes to catch the bus. So when it rains, they get wet. When it's cold, they shiver. When it's hot, they sweat. That part of the transportation, that macro, that micro part of the transportation that has to do with our babies, that's what I'm here for. The same thing with real estate or retail, it's the babies. What can they do? How can they learn to be an adult in a safe area and in a safe neighborhood? This is a small city. This is the safest place for them to learn those things. It's the nicest place for a sixteen-year-old man to take his sixteen-year-old girlfriend somewhere. We need to make that available for our kids. Our kids need to have a high quality of life, so they're not counting down until they're eighteen and they can get out of Hercules. We want them to stay, and we want them to enjoy our city. So my passion is schools.
And I'm one of those sixteen-year-olds that stayed around Hercules a little bit too long. But for me, it's public safety, because I think that's the common denominator that we all want, and it doesn't matter what your party line is or how old you are, we all wanna feel safe. And the thing is, we have to achieve that by working with our fire board to make sure the firefighters have what they need, because I'm gonna tell you guys a little story, the men and women in here in the story. So during the summer, when all those fires were going on, my unit was activated, and I saw a fire map of the Mendocino Complex Fire. And when I saw eight miles, an eight-mile radius of fire going straight across, I was a good at two math, I was a good math, so that definition might be wrong. But when I saw that eight-mile mark of fires going across, I said, "Holy cow, Hercules got lucky," 'cause that could've been right here. And I don't want to be, I don't want to be like that. Like I said earlier, I don't want us to look back when something happens, twenty years later, say, "Dang, that could've been prevented, we just did that." Our firefighters know what they need, but we need to make sure that they have a voice of the city council that will advocate for them, because right now, and I've been talking to the firefighters, they say that there's a strong disconnect here. And also, working with our police officers. Like I said, I was a police explorer, and I know that just every single officer on our force is a good person, but not everyone on the streets knows that. We need to make sure that people know the people that are policing their community so that they feel safe. Because of the twenty-one-year-old blackmail, my demographic has been the product of just about every bad policy in this country. And I know that I need to be at the decision-making table so that we won't have a lot of bad things happen. And that's why I say we need to improve our public, oh, I'm sorry, our public safety, so that way, we can prevent any tragedies from happening in the future. Sorry, I went to...
So we're done, right? Thank you. So with that, thank you very, very, very much for the series of questions that came from the community members that we co-sponsored with and the League of Women Voters. We're gonna move on to our last segment, which is closing statements. And I think the last one, we started, did we start with you, Dionne? This last round? No, the last question?
Yes. Yes, I guess we did.
No, the last question, we started with you. So with the closing statements, we'll start with Ms. Kelly, and you'll have two minutes.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I wanna thank the League of Women Voters here for organizing and moderating this forum, and I wanna thank Mr. Don Gosney for videotaping this forum. Thank you very, very much. I'm running for the city council because I wanna finish the work that I have been part of here in the city, which is launching and seeing the launch of the really big issues down by the ITC, the Bayfront, and possibly with Hilltown. Those are things that I have a lot of knowledge about, and I think I can help on. Over the four years, I think I've developed a great deal of expertise, especially on the transportation and some economic issues, and I understand the challenges. I understand what a city can do and can't do. And you know, with all due respect, our city has no jurisdiction over the fire department. We have no jurisdiction to the city over the schools. We try to maintain really good relationships, and I think overall, we do, but we, we don't control those entities, they're in control of their own lives. Um, I have also built many relations, good relationships with elected officials throughout the county, throughout Contra Costa County, and especially West County, um, and with the staff of various public agencies. And I think that I am respected for my knowledge, for my fairness, and for my even temperament here on this council. While this job is never, ever completely done, if you're a council member, I believe that I can help to carry this council forward, and I can improve on what this council has done. So I respectfully ask for your vote in November for four more years.
I just wanna end with saying, service is my passion. It's what I do, it's what I love to do, it's the air that I breathe. I've served for eight years as a parent volunteer at the local elementary, middle, and high school. It's, my strength is bringing community together and having communication and transparency. We may not have control of certain entities, but we have a voice inside those entities. If all of us don't take our kids to school, you bet the school board would change something. If all of us don't, if we all go down to the fire station and say, this is what we want, people, listen, we have power, we have strength, we have the ability to make the changes that are necessary, and by sitting on this board, I will be out, visible, inside the community, asking what you need. I will be the voice that you want. I will come to the city council meetings and let them know, this is what the citizens of Hercules are saying, this is what they want, and now let's get to it and give them what we want. We're public servants. We are not here to serve ourselves, we're here to serve you. And I will do that with honor, and it will be my pleasure to be able to do that. I'm a stay-at-home mom, I have flexibl, flexibility in my schedule, I can advocate for your needs. If you need me, call me, I'll be there, I'll have three kids with me, but I will be there to talk to you and sit on your porch and have a cup of coffee. I guess we got another place to get it. I will sit there and have another cup of coffee with you, and we can make the city the city that we want. Again, my passion is service, and I'm fighting for the schools, public safety, and a better quality of life for every single citizen in the City of Hercules.
For me, I care deeply about the city that I grew in, that I grew up in. I've lived here since I was six years old, and I really wanna be a part of the change that needs to happen in this city. My mom is standing right there, and I wanna thank her for everything that she's done, the League of Women Voters, and all the citizens that came out tonight, because if we have more participation, participation like this, there'll be a lot less corrupt politicians in our, uh, elected office. But in addition to that, service is my passion, and service is, that's something I deeply care about. My mom sees me when I leave that Friday morning, or that Saturday morning at five in the morning, put on my uniform and stand in formation at oh seven hundred to make sure that the citizens of California and the United States have someone there. As a member of the Board of Governors, I've spent time with undocumented students, single mothers, many women that just got out of prison, to make sure that they have a voice in Sacramento, not just at the board, but at the legislative offices of the Senate and of the Assembly. And I wanna do that right here in the City of Hercules, to make sure that everyone feels represented. Like I said, I grew up in this city, and I know what it's like, not knowing what your council member looks like, and only seeing them once, once of a blue moon, when something new happens at your city, and I know what that's like, to feel like you don't have a voice here at City Hall, or behind the dais. And I wanna make that statement, know that you do have a voice, and this is representation, not just for the people that vote, but for the people that can't vote, the people that don't have the opportunity to vote. You see, right now, we live in a very pivotal moment in America's history, and regardless of what your politics is, change needs to happen up and down. And if you elect me, I plan to do that. I have been endorsed by leaders such as Senator Kevin De Leon, Assilvian Tony Thurman, the United Firefighters of Contra Costa County. Those leaders believe in me, and I hope to have your support on November sixth. Thank you.
Good.
Thanks, Mommy.
I also wanna thank the League of Women Voters, and for all of you that came out tonight to listen to, um, our various approaches to solving some of the city's issues. Um, I, uh, have a history of building relationships with the city, um, and, and just in my workplace. I, uh, chair a committee, I chaired a committee for many years called Ops Cops Fire, where I worked, where I worked with the fire chief, uh, worked with the, um, police, leadership in the police department, and we worked together to resolve issues, and we're getting airport, which is kinda like a small town. Um, and so I have experience working with different agencies and trying to bring about consensus, agencies that I have no control over, but that we need to work together to solve common problems. I am a shop steward for the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. I'm E W twelve forty-five, I'm actually the chief steward. I negotiated three contracts successfully, um, for that organization, so I have experience leading my peers, um, as well. I'm also on the deferred compensation board for the Port of Oakland, where I have a fiduciary responsibility for the retirement accounts, equivalent of 401 K accounts, for the four hundred or so employees that work for the Port of Oakland. So I have, uh, dedicated myself to service, and I have served everywhere that I have, have worked and, and, and lived.